The first question, one of our candidates tonight mentioned a bit about the heart and the trees. So the first question we're going to ask came from Marissa Rubin, and she asked, "What in your life's history instilled compassion for trees?"
Well, I think probably growing up in a rural environment where I'm surrounded by forestry and trees, but even so, one would think that it would be an automatic feeling of compassion for trees or for any living thing. I mean, one would have that, it would be an inborn quality. But yeah, I've always been used to a rural saying, and that would definitely be why I'd feel a need for having a lot of trees around.
Okay, so let's go on. Next, Jerry Rubin.
Well, it's a wonderful question. It is, and I'm a wonderful tree-loving person. My wife, Marissa, we were married at the Children's Tree of Life, which was proclaimed by Kent Edwards, who this venue is named after as a living monument to world peace. I think I started gaining some real compassion for trees after Tree Savers was formed and meeting some of the beautiful people and getting closer to the trees, holding them and hugging them and feeling the energy. I think that I've become more compassionate as a person because of my connection with the trees. I hadn't had that as much as my wife, who has a very deep connection with trees and some of the other Tree Savers and other environmental activists that I do know. And I can tell you something, I'm very glad I do, and that should be the guiding light for the council, their heart, not just a structured political policy.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ted Winjer.
Well, like Linda, I grew up in New York City. Boy, there weren't a lot of trees. There were some squawdy London pines and the like growing on the sidewalks. So maybe that's why I appreciate trees, because they were few and far between with my youth. But I was fortunate enough to spend some summers in Maine at a summer camp canoeing backpacking around Maine, and the forests there are immense and robust and quite stirring. And in particular, this camp had weekly campfires under all that pine, it's a white pine, it must have been well over 100 years old. It was just a majestic thing to see, and it really would touch you to the soul. And I'm pleased to know when I get the occasional report back from the camp that that tree is still there and is living a long and fruitful life, because it's been an integral part of my life and it touched a lot of other people also.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ken Gensler.
I can't think of any single event or events that made me feel the way I did towards trees. I think if you feel something in your heart, you need to just feel it or you don't. You know, it's the same thing, but why do I love being near the ocean and the salt breeze? I just love that. So I don't have a direct answer to the question, but I find that trees are really an integral part of this community, not only physically, but I think in terms of the culture and the emotions of the community. And I also am very comforted when I think about us as a community working together to properly manage our precious environment, and trees are certainly a big component of that.
Thank you. Next candidate, Pervert Silverstein.
Well, I was brought up in Brooklyn, New York, and the house that we lived in had many trees around it. There were two apple trees, two cherry trees, an oak tree, and several other trees. And to me, this was my paradise in Brooklyn. When I came out here to Santa Monica, it was another paradise that was revealed to me. And this is why I love the trees as much as I do.
Thank you. Our next candidate down on this end is Linda Piera Abila.
Gosh. Well, as a kid, as many of us probably, went camping with my parents, you know, up to the redwoods, northern California coast, so grew up with an appreciation for trees. And then in my teenage years, I had what I would, I'll just say, was a trauma. And then on a subsequent camping trip, I have to say that those trees healed me. I really have to say that. Then going on to college, I started out as a body major and developed my love for trees as well as other flora and fauna, of course, that live in the trees. When I got married, I was married in Sequoia National Park, the base of the Clara Barton Tree. Through recent years, I've become friends with people who've been very active in other work to save other trees, specifically Campaign for Old Growth. Bruce Campbell and I have been active in that together, and I've gotten to be friends with some tree sitters. And it's been very inspirational to see their commitment to trees, and it's furthered my own commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next--
I actually, as a child, had run-ins with trees. I was very nearsighted. I remember bicycling and I ran into a branch of a tree, and then I was like, gee, everything looks cracked. And it's because the lenses were cracked. And then I remember falling backwards off a park bench and scraping my back on the bark of a peach tree. But despite all that, I've grown, I love trees, and I sense with trees the life within the tree. And if I see a sign that a tree's to be cut down, I go up and I say farewell to the tree, and I like to hug the tree. There's a life within that tree, and I don't like to kill living things. I'm a big-time gardener. I've rented for almost 40 years, and I would, had a portable garden, and so any of my plants, even if they were in the ground, I would, and trees too, I would uproot them and I would bring them, they were small, and I would bring them with me. So I love trees. And with the Tree Savers and what happened with our ficus trees, I learned a lot about ficus trees, and I've grown to really love them. They're like the archetypal tree. Every kid draws a tree like a ficus tree. So I love trees. Thank you.
Thank you. The last candidate in this round of questions is John Mann.
I was born in Medford, Oregon, which at the time, 1945, was a rainforest. My father was in the military. The first base we went to was in Hawaii. And in my backyard, I had this huge banana tree. One of my earliest memories was climbing that banana tree and falling out of it and landing in the soft grass that grew around it. And they used to call me nature boy. In all my life, I've been a tree climber. Whenever I'm in Australia or New Zealand, I had a job where I traveled around the world, if I saw a really nice tree, I would climb it. And I've got pictures of myself in Australia. I should have brought a climbing tree, swinging from the branches like Tarzan. Then when we were, I lived in Texas, there are hardly any trees. And we moved to Japan, and the only trees there were in the mountains. Then we moved to Washington State, and there used to be a rainforest. I own 40 acres of land, and I won't sell the trees. And I own a house in Eureka that's on a redwood forest, and I own a redwood tree, and I won't sell it, but my time is up and I have a lot more to say.
Thank you. Now, the question comes from Dale Flogerson in 21st Street near Ocean Park, and he says, "I've lived in my house since 1970. When I moved in, the trees were big. Now they are huge. Canopy touches in the center, good. Trees block out streetlights totally, bad. Neighbor's hedges is dead from lack of light, bad. Limbs reach to the houses, bad. Question: What is your stance on trimming? How do you feel on limiting a tree's size by trimming?"
Well, talk about tree trimming, and you know that the city council admitted that they were negligent for four years in trimming trees. And this is something, one of the reasons why we run into this problem with the ficus trees. The buses went by, did not hit the trees. The garbage trucks go by, and they hit the trees. Anything that's tall hit the trees. The trees were not protected. They don't protect the trees on tree protection zones where there's work going on, especially on Second Street when they're doing all the electrical work. You don't see any protection on those trees. The workers put everything on the trees, they nail up to the trees, they do everything else to the trees except to protect them. So if we had had trimming in the last four years, perhaps we wouldn't have the problem we have now.
Thank you. Next candidate is Ken Gensler.
I don't know the answer to the gentleman's question. I think that, one, I think we'd need to consult with experts who really understand the issues, would be harming the trees or not, would it be neutral in the tree's health or beneficial? That all certainly would be a significant factor. The other one, in a case like that, where I think there's an aesthetic issue also, I think that's when, you know, the neighborhood would have to weigh in too. I don't know if Dell would agree or the majority would agree about taking one approach or letting them grow further. So I just don't know the answer, but I think it's an interesting question to ponder. I can only tell you the process, the issues I look at to start trying to make an intelligent decision there. I want to just say in general about pruning trees is, I don't think that, I'm not aware of the council, any council member saying we were negligent, but I did push in this year's budget to make sure that we adequately funded tree trimming, because I think one of the best ways is to preserve trees, is to make sure they're maintained properly.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ted Winjer.
Well, this, as I understand it, and I'm no expert, but the science of tree trimming and maintenance, it's advanced a lot in recent years. You used to see crews come by, just top off trees and basically kill them, and the pruning techniques have gotten much more sophisticated. I think it's commendable that the city is allocating more and more funds to tree trimming. So to specifically answer the question is, I am in favor of trimming trees when they could get too large or do start to block out sunlight, but even only if it is done in a way which does not in any way impact the health of the tree and in fact enhances it. And I think if the tree commission does nothing else, it could be looking at these sort of issues and making sure that we're following the best practices possible in the city and caring for our trees.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jerry Rubin.
Well, I agree with a lot of what Ted said. There has to be an improved way to trim the trees. Pete the Barber saw a squirrel accidentally killed, you have to be careful. And others have seen the vehicles come up and bump the trees hard, and that's very unhealthy for the trees, so I hope the city monitors that. We need to increase the tree budget in Santa Monica, whether it be for new tree planting or for tree maintenance. The money that they're going to put in, the $1,100 to relocate seven healthy ficus trees on Fourth Street, the east side, can be better put to proper, more compassionate tree trimming. I do agree that a little light coming through can be helpful, and more frequent trimming, very sensitively done. The merchants were okay with that. They did that on Second and Fourth Street months before they cut them down, and that was very unfair.
Thank you, Jerry. Next candidate is Linda Armstrong.
Yeah, I'd say keep tree trimming to an absolute minimum. In fact, avoid it if you can, but only in circumstances where they absolutely have to be trimmed. And my feeling is that if it blocks out some streetlights, that might be a good thing.
Thank you. Next candidate is John Mann.
Well, I'm against it myself, for the same reason that I'm against declawing cats. I care more about plants and animals than I care about human needs personally. I think we have a lot more obligation to the species that share this planet with us than 6 billion plus human beings who are destroying the planet. So I think we can make a little accommodations for trees. Now, one of the things I think that we can do, instead of getting rid of trees, is to close down the airport. The reason I want to do that is because I want to turn the airport into a park, like Central Park or Golden Gate Park, a huge park in the middle of the city where we plant all kinds of trees, fruit trees, what Linda was saying before. We need to have a place where we could go and be in harmony with nature in this city. This city is becoming so overdeveloped and so urbanized that we have to trim trees to make room for lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Susan Hartley.
Well, if you look at my hair, you can see I'm not really into pruning or trimming. But I also appreciate the fact that sometimes you do need to prune, and it should be done conservatively. What's been happening with our trees is they've been hacked. And you look at what they've done to roots, and then you look what they do to the canopy, and it just makes you want to cry. So very conservative pruning, and trees can be thin, the canopy can be thin so that this light can come through, and I'd like to see, what's the location you're talking about again, whoever had that question? Well, talk to me afterwards, I'd like to go see this. Trees, I see trees as the core of any sustainability program, and for Santa Monica to say we're a big sustainable city and to not be doing everything we can to enhance our trees just doesn't compute. Thank you.
And our last candidate in this round is Nadev Piera Abila.
Well, I think this is the time to, it would be helpful to consult the Community Forest Management Plan. In that plan, there are guidelines for specific pruning and trimming procedures. And it also would be helpful to involve the neighbors, the community, so it's a community decision. Might be good to consult an independent arborist, a PPE. And then regarding the streetlights, don't know if the city would have it in its budget, but I'm wondering if an alternative street lamp could be, if they could move the streetlights, you know, move the streetlights down half a block, so that instead of having to carve up the trees, they could just move the streetlight and then do conservative tree trimming. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And before asking question number three, I just want to share one insight on this question that I had received from a resident several years ago, and that had to do with the nesting time for birds in our trees, and that we needed to coordinate the trimming to ensure that we weren't undermining that natural process. The third question comes from longtime active committee member, Luisa Fish, and she says that, "I believe ficus trees are not indigenous to Southern California. What trees have big canopies and are appropriate to this climate?" Of course, I don't know. My block has two grand Joshua trees on private property. Would they be appropriate for city lands? So generally, this question gets to, what is your position on, should we be planting indigenous trees in the city, and which would those be or not? Because that's often a raging debate, which are the appropriate ones or not? Is it better to stay with indigenous, or is it better to mix indigenous and other types?
You don't have to have just indigenous trees in Santa Monica. I'd like to see more evergreens, actually. That would be my position.
Thank you. Next candidate is John Mann.
Well, if you're going to talk about indigenous fauna, in Los Angeles, as I said before, it's a desert here, and we're bringing in water from the Colorado River. So if you're going to talk about having native habitat here, I like the idea, but first we've got to get rid of all the people. People don't belong here. Fortunately, the people that were indigenous here are mostly extinct, genocide. So we can't go back to the days when 99% of this planet was a rain, not a rainforest, but 99% of the plant and animal life that roamed this planet were still here, but they're dying out. Now we have animals that adapt to the urban environment, like the possum and rats. So what are we going to do? We can't really go back. We have to somehow reach an accommodation with our environment so we can all live in harmony with other animals and plants.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Susan Hartley.
I think the focus really needs to be canopy. And I lived up in Malibu, a lot of sycamore trees. I don't know that Santa Monica would be happy with sycamore trees in their parkway. I wouldn't mind, but I don't know that they would. Carob trees have a wonderful canopy, and they're drought tolerant. I like ficus trees still, despite all the brouhaha. And we have the California Live Oak. Linda mentioned this community forest plan. You read it, it's a lovely plan, but the city doesn't follow it. We need to be following this plan. They're talking about doing another one. It's just paper, formerly a tree. And they don't follow it to save their trees. We need to have wider parkway widths. They did that on Yale Street. They widened the parkways so that the trees could stay. We need to be thinking of those kind of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Linda Piera Abila.
So, yeah, if you go down in this Community Forest Management Plan, it gives a rundown of all the trees in Santa Monica, and I couldn't find very many that were indigenous. And as I mentioned before, I think it would be a good idea to start phasing in some native species. And there are some trees that do have large canopies that are native, black walnuts, post-live oak. We're not, most of us, most of us, except for the Tonga people, are not indigenous. So, you know, you can't, can't be two-species-ist, species-ist, I guess that would be the word, and just say, well, we're only going to have indigenous, you know, native trees. That would be nice, we could phase it in, but we're not, you know, most of us moved here from somewhere else also. So it would be good to have a mix, I think. And as far as, yeah, we are in a drought, I think we need to accentuate our stormwater, runoff collection, recharge, you know, the groundwater, and possibly consult with some ethnobotanists about appropriate species that would fit the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Pervert Silverstein.
Not to be repetitious, but again, we should have various species of trees here interspersed among the ficus and eucalyptus and the palms as well. Some of the trees will be drought-exceptional, but we have to preserve the foliage, we've got to preserve the water, which we have very little of, and of course, the expansion that we're having now shouldn't, should be cut back so we can have the water for these trees.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ken Gensler.
I don't know what trees are indigenous to the area. I understand, when I read the community management, the forest management plan a while ago, it really said there weren't a lot of trees here way back when. But even if a tree is indigenous, it has to be suitable for our now-modified landscape. For example, although live oak might be wonderful in a park space where there's room to spread the limbs, it wouldn't be appropriate in a small parkway where there's a really congestion between a building and the street. I think what's, the principle should be something like, range of them, and no particular priority, diversity of species, diversity of age, and appropriateness for the particular setting, so that they're thoughtfully placed, so that they will enhance the environment and not create problems which in the long run aren't helping for the tree.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ted Winjer.
I certainly would be in favor of adding some more indigenous species to the mix of our urban forest tag. I tend to agree with Ken that some of the native trees around here might not do so well in the small tree wells we currently provide for them. I think the sycamores would do well. I think they're the benefit of native trees, that they thrive in the environment in which they originated, and they provide enhanced environment for the natives' wildlife species. I mean, birds and other animals that are used to living in the natives' trees would do better in those trees than they will in trees from other areas. I think that the crux of the matter though is that we still got to get the point where the city is more interactive with the residents about how to take care of the trees in front of where they live, and then tell them there are guidelines about, oh, this is a carob tree, don't water it too much, or this is a non-native species that needs auto-water, and people need to know how to take care of those trees. And that's why we're in the predicament we are today with having to remove some of these trees, which is regrettable because they haven't been cared for.
Thank you. Now, last candidate on this question is Jerry Rubin.
Well, we're lucky to have all those ficus trees. It's the second most prevalent tree in Santa Monica, over 3,000 of them. Whoever made the decision to put them in, I know Jacqueline Gerion and Chloe Hoover in the Chamber of Commerce in the city made the decision to put them in the downtown district, and I'd say, despite the controversy with Tree Savers, they served our community well, and will continue to do it. We have rubberized sidewalks now, the technology's there to handle any of the roots. If there was a study of the environmental and health benefits that these 3,000 ficus trees have given us, I think would be astounding. Sure, we want to bring some indigenous trees, if not at the expense of the wonderful ficus trees we have. If anything, they've earned squatter rights already. They've been here longer than most of us.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. One person asked on two cards here, it said, "The editors of the Santa Monica Mirror have written, 'You know they were going to cut down those ficus trees. Photos after the fact put to rest the lie that the ficus trees were dying.' The question being, why do you think, why do each of you think the ficus trees were slaughtered? What was the real reason?" And it goes on to say, "The ficus trees were worth many thousands of dollars and provided enormous benefits. Do you think any crimes may have been committed by their destruction? Whose job it is to investigate this?" And this is by Cosmo Buah?
Cosmo.
Cosmo, okay. And then Bruce Campbell, noted statewide forestry activist, similarly asked, "Despite the claim by an incumbent that through research, that thorough research leads to the conclusion that a number of sizable trees should be removed, it seems like pressure from the Bayside District and contractors must have played a role in the city council decision to remove many healthy trees. Do you believe that there has been inappropriate pressure to remove ficus and other trees that had nothing to do with public safety?" So all of that provides one follow-up, if any of you want to follow up on the downtown. And then Louis Perkins, a longtime activist with the Northeast Neighbors Group, said that he observes that there are less and smaller trees, yet thousands of pretty new dwelling units. Is the idea, broadly speaking about city policy, to minimize the trees because they'll die anyway with the increased traffic?
I didn't feel any pressure from Bayside. From my perspective, no, we don't agree necessarily, I wish they would put on more pressure. I mean, I don't think they put on hardly at all, and I don't see that. The issue about the trees, I think there's been a great misunderstanding about the number, why trees were removed. I disagree with the statement that was said before, that the independent arborists said that most of those trees, the 23 trees that were cut down, slaughtered, murdered, whacked, whatever you want to say, was not what the arborists recommended. Two independent arborists, plus our own arborist, said that should be the policy. Many of those trees were structurally deficient, most of those trees were structurally deficient. You look at a cross-section, we just had this dialogue on over a carob tree on 10th Street the other, the other past week. A cross-section is healthy. That doesn't mean the root structure is healthy. I'll give you an extreme example. One of the trees by McDonald's, it wasn't one that the city took out because it was, it happened as part of the construction of the McDonald's. When they lifted up the sidewalk, they found that, oh, well, the tree was healthy. There was no roots, basically, in the ground. The roots were horizontal, on the land, the concrete itself was holding that tree up. When the concrete was removed to be replaced, there was nothing to hold up that tree, and even in spite of the injunction, the city took out that tree because it was unstable. Most of those 23 trees were not of that category, I don't mean to say that, but they had sufficient deficiencies in them that while the city was doing this project, recognizing that they were going to come out in three to four years in that range, in any event, it made sense to do them now. Again, replacing them at a ratio of three and a half to one, and doing it very judiciously, only those trees that had demonstrated and cataloged deficiencies to them. It doesn't mean they were dying, it doesn't mean that they were ready to fall over, and it doesn't mean that if you looked at them, they didn't look healthy. There were problems with those individual trees. This city, as a policy and in the downtown, made the commitment that where we wanted to remove other trees, unlike, I think, most jurisdictions, where they simply would have cut them down, we were going to move them. Even those trees we wanted to move, if we found, and which was the case of the majority of them, when we actually did boring, so the roots, found that they couldn't be safely moved, then we said they're going to stay in place. I believe this whole process has been managed sensitively and appropriately, but I think that we're, and ultimately, we made the right decisions.
Thank you very much.
Personally, I feel that, I disagree with Ken Gensler, that this was handled in a way it should, it should have been much more action. To cut that, come at 2:30 in the morning and cut down 23 trees in front of a preschool class of children who were traumatized by it, to me, this was a slaughter, an absolute slaughter. And I think the council should have really turned around and apologized to this city for what they had done. If there were only two or three trees to come down, all right, it's a possibility, that would have sufficed. But 23 trees and to cut out the canopy that we had before, all these shopkeepers were against it, we were against it, half this city was against us by giving us all these signatures opposed to the way the trees were cut down. It's a shame that it happened this way, but I feel that this council is in the type of, type of people who would rather rule than to represent the people of this city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ted Winber.
Well, I agree thematically with Herb. I feel that this downtown plan was driven by the Bayside District and by big business interests. The whole idea behind the plan is to make Second Forest Streets more appealing for out-of-town shoppers and to generate more revenues for the businesses and ergo to the city tax base. And I think we unfortunately live in a time where our city residents are largely disenfranchised from these decisions. I have had this ongoing debate with the city manager. He meets quarterly, he has quarterly lunches with the Chamber of Comps, for which people in the chamber pay $2,500 a year for the privilege. I said, "I know you're not getting that money a lot, but it looks bad, because why aren't you meeting quarterly with various neighbor groups and getting their opinions on various issues?" He said, "I'll think about it," but nothing ever happened. But I think we all need in groups like this to start making a stink about taking back city hall and letting our voices be heard. I think this plan was flawed from the get-go, as I said, not just because of the plan to remove trees, but also what does it provide for you and me? It doesn't provide any mechanism to heal our bay with stormwater management. It doesn't provide any mechanism for us to bicycle downtown. It doesn't do any of the things that enhance our experience downtown. It provides an enhanced shopping experience. So, I just, I think it was a terrible idea from the start.
Our next candidate, Jerry Rubin.
Well, you know, I was at those Bayside meetings, and yes, they were putting pressure, whether Councilman Gensler wants to acknowledge that or not. And again, it was just a few of the property owners. The community was against this. They never had adequate town hall forums on this. The most controversial aspect of the plan, the $8.2 million plan, the $600,000 for unnecessary composting and relocation, should have had at least a few town hall forums. We had asked that, we were forced to do a lawsuit. We didn't want to. We've always tried to seek a win-win solution, and we're still trying to do that with the Tree Commission. But the truth of the matter is, the city sees tree savers as adversarial, and that is blatantly unfair. The difference is, they are elected to represent us, and they haven't done that on a number of issues, including the trees.
Thank you. Next candidate, Lydette Armstrong.
Yeah, I don't know why they cut down so many trees. I can only guess, a deal with developers, some sort of a businessman's pressure. Who knows? But anyway, they went ahead and they cut down all these trees, and they ignored the will of the people. And I called the city council for that, pretty simply, not representing the people that elected them to the city council. For this, they should be answerable.
Thank you. Our next candidate is John Manning.
I disagree with Jerry Rubin that tree savers are not adversarial. They are, they should be, because there's no win-win solution with this city. You can't suck up to the city manager or the council and hope to negotiate a compromise and use our policy with these people. They lie. They're liars. They misled us, they distorted the truth, they designated the trees as a facility to get it past us. There's no win-win solution, Jerry. You're barking up the wrong tree. You can't negotiate with these people. This is a crime. They should be recalled, every single one of them. Just like George Bush would be impeached for lying to us. It's the same thing. The Bayside people, I've been to those meetings. It's all about money. It's always been about money with this city. We've got one of the biggest budgets in the whole state. And what do they spend it on? They don't spend it on us. That's our money. We need to make this city into a park for people who live here, not for tourists, not for developers, not so people can get rich. We need to return Santa Monica to its roots, what it used to be, a beach city, a haven, a paradise. What is it? Look around you, and what do you see? Development all over the place. It's ridiculous. I'm fed up with it. That's why I'm running for city council. And I tried to put that in my candidate statement, and they wouldn't let me do it. They censored me, just like I've been censored by the tree savers for calling for a recall. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to our last candidate this round, I just wanted to apologize. I should have said earlier as ground rules that, and I know there was absolutely no ill will intended here when John mentioned Jerry in terms of, we're all respecting each other as candidates, but I'm going to just give Jerry an extra 10 seconds when he goes to his closing statement. Because of the old personal privilege, if you call somebody else out, you give them the opportunity to respond.
Cosmo's question, why did they kill the trees? Greed? They said it was purely designed. They just wanted to change the look. There was no, they lied about the disease, they lied about the instability. We kept looking at the trees, the independent arborists. You look at the independent arborist report, they're hired gun, okay? I wouldn't even call her an independent arborist. She was paid, and she gets paid many times by the city to give them reports that they want. And she only said three of the trees were high-risk. Many of them were low, many were medium. So, there was no reason to be killing those trees. The trees exemplify the disconnect between our city government and the people. I've gone to the Bayside meetings. They treat the residents who attend those meetings like crap. We're not supposed to be there. They're like, "What are you doing here at our meeting?" I've been told that they laughed at tree savers and what we were trying to do to save the trees, openly at the meetings, and Gensler joined in with it. They're in for height of buildings in this city, not for height of trees. I've talked to a lot of out-of-towners, tourists down on Second and Fourth Street, gathering their signatures. And when they heard that the city wanted to remove those trees, they were shocked, visibly shocked, like, why do they want to do that? I think anybody that calls a tree a facility should be fired from Santa Monica. We don't need those people in our government. They should be fired. There is a win-win solution, and that is that we replace these council people. We have good candidates running, and we need to replace the council people that are for the density, the height, and the killing of trees and more traffic.
Thank you very much. And with that, we've completed the question round. And we go to the closing statements. We've already heard from Ken Gensler, and next is Susan Hartley.
Okay, I'm...
75 seconds, I'm sorry. Please.
75 seconds, okay. That sounds, anyway. That sounds very brief, but a minute and 15 seconds sounds a little longer.
Let her go ahead and start now, rather than...
I asked to be first because my dog was attacked by a loose dog this morning, and I want to go, I'm worried about her, and she's in a lot of pain. Santa Monica needs to really revise, revamp their tree program. Even in Brentwood, they have a tree adoption program with the coral trees on San Vicente and along San Vicente, right here in our backyard. We need to be doing that here. They have tree programs, tree adoption programs in Miami of all places. We need it here. So, Santa Monica is known for its trees, and we need to talk, we need to walk like we talk with regard to our trees. San Francisco has a Friends of the Urban Forest Program. We can have that here. They provide people with trees to plant. They provide instructions, classes on how to maintain and to care for trees and how to plant the trees. We need to have those things here. We need to stop the killing of trees. People in Santa Monica, people in our government that want to kill trees, they need to go get jobs in the desert. We don't need them here. We don't want them here. So, please, you need to vote out these people and vote in the people that want to save our trees in Santa Monica. Please vote. I would really appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate will be John Manning.
I have to echo what Susan just said, some to the desert. But, you know, for me, this is not just about the trees. It's just about the whole direction that this city has taken since the '70s, really. We used to be the people's republic in Santa Monica. We're not that anymore. I've got here just a few of the articles that were in the various local papers. Here's an article I've got there by Lynn Broadstone right here. And there's a quote from Richard Boone. "This is the arrogance of our city council. I don't think I can change most of your minds, and you certainly cannot change my mind." That's their attitude. Gensler just said he's unapologetic. I wish he was here, so I could say it to his face. But, you know, it's just, I'm running for city council because I'm fed up with all these special interests. And it's not just the ones that we're talking about tonight, about the trees and the Bayside Commission. It's just these politicians, to get elected in this city, you have to be endorsed. You know who endorses people to get elected? Smur. The city employees, the police department. That's how you get elected. We don't have a chance unless we sell out. The independent people that run for city council are not going to get elected here or any else in this country. You have to have a conflict of interest. You have to sell out to get elected. So, we're not going to win. What we're doing here is we're speaking out against the machine.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Lydette Armstrong. And Susan, thank you for caring for your trees and your dog.
I knew that, really. Did I say we got to watch that? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Lydette Armstrong.
Yeah, I think the mayor said it best, "Kill them, dismembered." Yeah, my feeling is that when the city council becomes arrogant and refuses to respond to the wishes of the people that they were elected to represent, that there has to be a change. And that's what I'm all for, changing the city council and people who are responsive to the needs and wishes of the people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And our camera person, are you ready to move to our next candidate, Jerry Rubin? And Mr. Rubin, you get an extra 10 seconds.
100 seconds?
Any response, I do want to say. I do want to say that I still support a win-win solution, and so that the city's not embracing that, and that is unfortunate. I urge all of you to support tree savers. I urge you to spread the word so we can have a big turnout at our anniversary event, the Promenade Playhouse, on Friday, September 12th, exactly a year when we had our first meeting. It was on the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah at the time. You're talking about the tree of life that's embraced by all religions. So, we're going to have a recommitment ceremony. I urge you all to support it. The election will be coming up. I'm going to be conducting a clean campaign, but I want to speak on the issues. I'm not supporting any of the incumbents. I urge people to vote with their heart, and I urge people to come and ask the hard questions and get involved. I do think all of us have a chance. Why should someone only make up their minds because an expensive sleek mailing comes to their mailbox? I think people will know, and the press has an obligation to report on the other candidates as well as the incumbents. My website is jerrypieceactivistrupin.com, and I link to other websites, including tree savers, and I hope you all stay involved. I hope you'll support a tree commission and make sure it's a full commission and not just a subcommittee of an already-existing commission. That's imperative. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ted Winber.
Somewhat differently from others, I'm going to start off by talking about a positive experience. I had the city hall on trees, just because it's the exception that proves the rule. And on the Recreation and Parks Commission, we had the chance to review the tree pallet down the New Beach Green Project, which filters stormwater runoff and provides recreational space down in the parking lot at the end of Hollister. And the consultants wanted to plant some new Zealand Christmas trees there. And we said, "Why? Why wouldn't you plant native species down by the beach in our native habitat?" And they said, "Well, I don't know. Maybe we should do that." And the end result was we got them to plant ironwoods down there, which is a native tree, which is indigenous to that very small sort of sub-habitat right by the coastal zone. It can handle the salt air and the severe sun and the wind, et cetera. And I'm pleased to say they planted those trees, and they're thriving down there. It just shows the value of citizen input in some of these decisions, and why we should have a tree commission that oversees all these large-scale tree planting schemes and provides, we know, we know what's best. And sometimes the city staff gets lost because, excuse the Kevin McCoon-type pun, they can't see the forest for the trees. So, I think what we need to change the direction of the city so we do have these opportunities, and what I say is very rare and all too infrequent, we need to have opportunities for residents to express our opinions. We need to elect council members who will respect residents' opinions and bring a new critical way of thinking about city policies into play. And I hope you'll consider me and some of my colleagues, all of my colleagues, excuse me up here on the dais, as viable candidates for city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two remaining candidates. Herbert Silverstein.
Truthfully, I'm running because I'm tired of seeing what's going on in this city. There's too many things going on that don't involve the citizens of the city. They're being told what to do and not asked what can be done. And so, my candidacy is not only for the tree savers. It's, I'm tired of going to city council meetings and seeing the members there sitting there and sneering at everything that is said by the public. They sneer, they don't have any expression on their face as if to say, "Why am I sitting up here listening to you?" But we have to have a council that sits there and listens and does things that the public wants to have done. So, that's why I'm running for city council, and I hope the four seats that are vacant will be filled by four of us so we can have a city that's back on track again.
Our candidate is Lydette Piera. I'm here.
Well, thanks, everyone, for your attention through this evening's proceedings. I've lived here in Santa Monica for 28 years, and I know back in '95, my cousin Eileen and her family came here from New Orleans, and they were just enthralled with our trees. They spent one day just driving around looking at all the trees. So, we're very fortunate to have such a wonderful urban forest here. Trees are a part of the fabric of life here in Santa Monica. Trees are vital, and people care about them. And I believe on our deepest levels, we are all interconnected to each other and to all life on the planet. Now, people appreciate the work that the city has done on other environmental issues, as Ted alluded to. And indeed, Santa Monica has prided itself on its values of sustainability. I'd like to see that move forward. We also pride ourselves on our quality of life issues and on being on the cutting edge of environmental best practices. But I'm also very concerned about this disconnect that I've seen between citizens and the city government on this tree issue. So, I'm running to be a responsive public servant and to do my best to be in touch with issues that concern residents the most. And I respectfully ask for your consideration for your vote for me on November 4th. Lydette Piera Adula, thank you.
Let's give all our candidates a big hand.
Well, thank you, Mike, for moderating this discussion about the urban forest. And thank you for everyone who's participated and everyone who's viewing this online. The urban forest is really part of the fabric of our city. Think about it, where would we be and how would we feel about our community if there were no trees here? So, it is a part of our heritage. It's something that we need to pay close attention to. It's something we need to preserve. But perhaps most importantly, we need to learn from the mistakes that nobody knew 50 years ago, 60 years ago, when somebody, when some of these trees were planted, that we need a diverse urban forest, that trees provide more than just shade, that they are also returning something into the ecosystem and are in fact a very important part of our ecosystem. We need to learn those lessons and improve our tree scape over the decades that follow so that future generations will be able to enjoy the beautiful amenities that we have in Santa Monica for many, many generations to come.
First of all, I've expressed myself as much as I can on the questions asked. I think and I believe that I would be very valuable as a council member, which is why I'm running for reelection on all issues. And one of them, important, is urban planning and urban trees, because that's where I come from. I was known on the planning commission as the one that demanded trees and planning, and I still believe in it. And I think that it comes under the master plan, and we can watch it and control it, but not take it so narrow that you can't do anything. Because sometimes you put so many stringent conditions on, it can't happen. And I think that's one of the reasons that I'm running. I'm running for a lot of reasons, but that's one. And I think increasing the trees and plant reliance throughout our city is highly important. So, that's my statement.